Now.
Hang on.
No way for Barbara.
Of course.
Okay, we're good?
You good?
Yep.
Okay, zoning board review is now in session. First thing we will do is do roll call. So, Mr. Borden, Mr. Borden is present. Mr. Furell?
Mr. Furell is present.
Ms. Pavlakis?
Ms. Pavlakis is present.
And I don't believe, Mr. Reposeur, are you on yet? Reposeur is not on yet, and the chairman, Chairman James Nye is on. Barbara, can you? Okay, there are no minutes to approve, and the chairman has nothing on my report. So, the first item on our agenda is a petition by Nellie Cuna in a dimensional variance for front and rear yard setbacks and lot coverage, a special use permit to construct and attach to garage to an existing dwelling on a nonconforming lot of record located at 111 Rhode Island Avenue. Is Ms. Cuna on?
Yes, she is here. I'm her son-in-law.
Oh, okay, and for the record, could I have your full name and address, please?
Nellie J. Cuna, 121 Rhode Island Boulevard, Portsmouth.
Thank you, and the son-in-law, could I have your full name and address as well, please?
Yes, it's Gary David De Silva, 55 Mays Road in Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Thank you. Mike, is there a volume a little? Okay, could you kind of explain to the board what you're looking to do?
Well, we'd like to add, I want to say it's a one-car garage, but it's a little wider than that, just to fit the snow blower and the ride-on tractor as well, and then move the deck that we currently have in place behind the garage.
Hey. And you're on a corner lot, correct?
Yes.
So, thus creates the sort of hardship because you're on the corner lot. So, this is down in Cotton Fence Point, correct?
Yes.
So, let me ask you a question. From, I see where you're on your drawing, you have 10.4, 10.7 feet proposed from the property to the garage to the lot line, is that correct?
Yes.
How far would you say you are to the actual paved road?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
I said, how far would you say you are from the paved road?
Oh geez, from the actual, from the, from the house to the street?
Yeah, at least 10 to 20 feet.
Yeah, more than, more than, more than 20, based on the actual 10.7, because it looks like it's more than double from that property line to the paved road. So, probably close to maybe 22, 23 feet, I would say.
All right, and Mr. Rashola, just for the record, that's based because originally those roads were considered to possibly go 60 feet wide, correct? For, in your opinion, what is the probability of the town ever widening those roads to 60 feet?
Very unlikely.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions. Mr. Borden, do you?
Yes, Mr. Borden here, I have a question, petitioner. The proposed garage is 15 by 15. Most garages are like 22 feet in length. I don't know how you're going to fit a car in a 15 by 15 garage.
Um, well, yeah, maybe the, the length of it from front to back might, like, I mean, I, I don't know the length of the car that we drive. Now, I don't know usually how long, how wide, how, why the, the length of the cars are, but if it needs, I would imagine a car could fit in a 15, no? I mean, maybe, maybe I'm wrong, could my estimate?
No, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm kind of raising the question for your benefit.
Sure.
It's, you know, from a zoning perspective, it's, it's kind of irrelevant. This is your petition. And I was just raising the question if your measurements were mistaken and the actual garage was longer. But if 15 by 15 is what you're proposing, then we'll move on.
Uh huh. Yeah, well, we'll stay with that measurement that we have there.
It says, it says 15 by 15, so that's what we'll go by, okay? All right. Mr. Furell, do you have any questions to the applicant?
Yes, sir, I, I do have a couple of questions.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. De Silva, the, the, the front of the garage is going to be sort of on a line with the front or with that side of the home, is that true?
Yes, but based on the measurements we have there, it looks like it's pretty flush, yep.
Yeah, so you're not going to be encroaching on the road any more than the houses is presently from that side?
No, sir.
Oh, thank you. And, and your, your, your drawing also shows a shed. Will that shed be removed when, since the garage will provide storage space?
Yeah, the, the current plan in place is to move it actually down more, again, more towards the corner, if you will. Because right now that the shed, it's, it's, it's an eight by eight, it's a, it's a plastic shed with a cement slab. So, the slab will probably, it may have to be removed, maybe not based on the drawings, but the, the plastic shed itself will be an issue to move. So, we'll probably slide it down just a little bit, so it's not in the way or too cumbersome.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's the only questions that I had. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Ladiga, do you, on Ms. Pavlakis, do you have any questions?
No, I do not, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ladiga, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay. I do have some questions I do have to ask regarding the special use permit. So, if this were allowed, would it still allow adequate space for fire protection?
Meaning, would they get to the backyard?
Could the fire apparatus still control fire there?
I wouldn't see why not, but I can't say, I know the specifics when it comes to the fire.
Okay, would it, would it allow adequate light and air between buildings, between your building and the next-door neighbors, et cetera?
I believe so, yes, because if you, if you notice the neighbors, it's, it's still a decent distance in between. There you go.
Would, would this alter the character of the neighborhood or adversely affect your neighboring property?
I personally don't believe so. I think, I think a garage adds value to the property.
Would it create lot coverage and setbacks lessen the average lot coverage and setbacks of adjacent properties? In other words, are there similar properties to yours with, there?
Well, I, I didn't notice any garages in the area, to be honest. Other than that, the, the property is pretty similar to the rest of the property, the surrounding properties.
Would it impose any detriment to the public or immediate neighbors?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Rashola, do we have any butters to this petition there that anyone wants to speak?
I want to just ask there anyone to.
Is there anyone on the call that would like to speak to this petition?
Okay.
No hands, okay. So, Nellie Cuna is before the board for tax assessors map lot 107, seeking an 8% lot coverage variance, a 9.3 foot front yard variance, and 8.2 rear yard variance, 8.2 rear yard variance, and a special use permit for the purpose of adding a garage and relocating the deck on their property. Mr. Borden?
Chairman, a garage is a reasonable accessory use to a residential dwelling. Petitioner is essentially requesting the least relief necessary in that, in my opinion, a 15 by 15-foot garage is extremely small. Lot is constrained by only being 6,800 feet in an R20 zone. To have 28% lot coverage in this area given the size of the lot is not, in my opinion, excessive. Setbacks are constrained by the fact that petitioner has to meet two front yard setback requirements. So, I think that the relief requested is the minimum relief, and deny an amount to more than a mere inconvenience. So, therefore, I vote to approve 9.3 foot front yard variance and 8.2 foot rear yard variance and a 3.2 foot rear yard variance for the deck on Rhode Island Boulevard. I also vote to approve lot coverage variance, and the petitioner has met all of the special use criteria for substandard lot of record, which I also approve.
Thank you very much, Mr. Borden, Mr. Furell.
Mr. Chairman, I also vote to approve the special use permit and the dimensional variances, lot coverage, front and rear yard setbacks, for the reasons cited by Mr. Borden.
Thank you, Ms. Pavlakis?
I concur with Mr. Furell and Mr. Borden and approve the dimensional variance and the special use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Ladiga.
I, I concur for the reasons stated previously.
On, on both the dimensional variance and special? All right. Chairman also concurs with Mr. Borden as well, and I vote to approve both the special use permit and the dimensional variance and lot coverage variance. So, they've been approved.
Very good, thank you.
All righty, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a great evening.
For the record, it looks like Mr. Reposeur has joined the meeting, is that correct, Mr. Reposeur?
That is correct, sorry for the delay, I had a little technical difficulty.
Welcome, Mr. Reposeur.
Thank you, John, Mr. Borden.
The next item on the agenda is a petition by Kyle Fay and Katherine Manning, tax assessors map 45 lot 26, seeking a special use permit and a dimensional variance in order to relocate the existing basement access due to a master suite addition at the rear of the house, also due to the existing septic along the rear of the house. The, is Mr. Fay and Ms. Manning on?
Yes, Mr. Fay is on.
All right, you want to explain to the board what you'd like to do?
Sure, good evening. What my wife and I would like to do is actually add an addition onto our house just to bring it up to a three-bedroom, two-bath house. It would give us a little bit more space. The actual addition itself is in compliance for the variances of the town. We're actually just requesting that the bulkhead that you see on the right side of that drawing there on the screen be approved, just so that we can have the space to access the basement north of the deck that you would see there, there's actually a shed.
Okay. Right now, where is the bulkhead located, Mike?
If you were to look at where the existing house is and the abutment at, just below the 20-foot mark there, that's where the existing bulkhead is now.
Okay, and I would assume that there's no other access to the basement? That be correct?
That, that's correct.
And is, is this just your typical bulkhead, like we see with the double hatch type?
Yeah, yes, exactly right.
I have no other questions, Mr. Borden. Mr. Borden has no questions. Thank you, Mr. Furell, do you have any questions?
Ben Furell has no questions, sir.
Pavlakis?
Kathleen Pavlakis has no questions.
Reposeur?
I have no questions at this time.
Chairman has asked the questions. Mr. Fay, the one thing I do have to do, because it's a substandard lot of record, I do have to ask the question for the special use permit. If allowed, would this still allow adequate space for fire protection for the building?
Yes.
Would it provide adequate light and air between buildings?
Yes.
Would it alter the character of the neighborhood or adversely affect any of your neighboring properties?
No.
Could create lot coverage and setbacks lessen the average lot coverage and setbacks of adjacent properties?
No, it would not.
Would it impose a substantial detriment to the public or to immediate neighbors?
No.
Thank you. No one on the board has any other questions. Do we have any call-ins that want to speak to this matter? So, please raise your hand. Seeing none, and we have no letters in the file. Kyle Fay and Katherine Manning are before the board for tax assessors map 45 lot 26. They did a 3.2-inch variance for the purpose of relocating the bulkhead on their house in order to enlarge their house, make it three-bedroom, and which will require the septic system to also be relocated. They've given testimony that they do meet all of the special use criteria. So, Mr. Borden?
Chairman, certainly a reasonable request to request an addition to your house residential use. Fully enjoy the permitted residential use. The house is small, they want to add a master bedroom. The relief that's being requested is extremely minimal. They are constrained in so many different ways. The bulkhead that's encroaching, the bulkhead is not really a structure, and it's minimal, and the relief that's being sought is minimal. The lot coverage is in compliance at 13.4%. So, to deny an amount to more than a mere inconvenience, and I vote to approve a side yard south setback variance of 3.2 feet, 3 feet 2 inches, and they've also met the special use criteria for a substandard lot of record. So, I vote to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Furell?
Mr. Chairman, I vote to approve the special use permit and the dimensional variance for the side yard setback for the reasons cited by Mr. Borden.
Thank you, Ms. Pavlakis?
I vote to approve both the dimensional variance and the, in the side yard setback for reasons previously stated.
Thank you, Mr. Reposeur?
I also vote to approve reasons previously stated. Both.
Special use permit and.
Correct. Both of them correct.
All righty, and the chairman votes to approve both the special use permit and the dimensional variance request for reasons previously stated by Mr. Borden. So, you are all set.
Thank you very much.
All righty, have a good evening, good night, Mr. Fay.
Have a great weekend.
You as well.
Bye.
We'll be right along. Next item on the agenda is, let's see. Okay, wait for me a second. Is a petition by Scott and Kerry Hahn seeking dimensional variance and setbacks and a special use permit to construct an addition to an existing dwelling on a nonconforming lot of record. Hahn's on?
Yeah, Scott Hahn is on.
Looks like Kerry's on as well. Okay, for the record, Scott, can we have your full name and address, please, for Barbara?
Yeah, it's Gary Scott Hahn. 41 Arrowhead Lane, Portsmouth.
Do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
All right, now I know Kerry is on, is Kerry going to speak?
She is not.
Okay. All right, Mr. Hahn, why don't you explain to the board what you'd like to do?
Well, we're doing an addition off the back of our house, we just need a little bit more space.
What will be in the, in the addition?
We're doing a, a family room, a little bit more space for our kitchen, a little bit more space for our bathroom, and a little bit more space for our master bedroom.
You don't require any additional lot coverage, you meet the lot coverage criteria, correct?
Yes, it's, it's, actually, it's just an addition directly off the back of the house. We're not going more on either side, we're just kind of going right off the back of the house. It's just not, the house is, is not conforming, so we're just, that's why we're having this.
Right, it's, it's, it's a nonconforming lot of record, correct?
Right.
And your proposal is basically just to go, as I see in the drawing, just to go straight back?
That's it.
Okay, now, there's an existing porch where the proposed addition is, where's that? Is that going to be relocated or just removed totally?
No, we're taking that out.
Okay, all right. I have no other questions myself. Borden, do you have any? No questions. Okay, Mr. Furell?
No questions, sir.
Pavlakis?
No, I have no questions.
Reposeur?
No questions at this time.
I've asked mine, Mr. Hahn, I do have to go through the special use criteria questions? So, if allowed, would this still allow adequate space for fire protection?
Yes.
Would it still provide adequate light and air between your buildings?
Yes.
Would it alter the character of the neighborhood or adversely affect your neighboring property?
No.
Could create lot coverage and setbacks lessen the average lot coverage and setbacks of any adjacent properties?
No.
Would it impose a substantial detriment to the public or to immediate neighbors?
No.
Thank you. Have any butters, or interested parties that want to speak to this, Mike, could you take a look? No, you do not, okay. That being said, Scott and Kerry and Hahn are before the board for tax assessors map 12 lot 84, a special use permit and dimensional variance of 1 foot to the south side of their house. A, a, 7 foot? 7 inch?
Is it 1 foot 7?
1 foot 7 inch, that's what it is, hard to read. 1 foot 7 inch variance to the north side of their property to put an addition on. They don't intend to approach any more than the house already exists, and they've given testimony that they meet all the special use criteria. So, Borden?
Chairman, the petitioner is requesting an addition to provide more space for living area for the enjoyment of their residential home. Relief being sought is the least relief necessary. 1 foot variance to the south is minimal. 1 foot, 1 foot 7 inches to the north is minimal, and I vote to approve both of those variances because it would amount to a hardship more than a mere inconvenience. Petitioner is essentially keeping in line with the existing structure. These encroachments existed, already existed when the house was built. This is a reasonable request to deny, again, an amount of hardship more than a mere inconvenience. I vote to approve. In regards to the special use request for substandard lot of record, petitioner has clearly stated that he meets all the criteria under the ordinance for.
Thank you. Mr. Furell?
Mr. Chairman, I also vote to approve the special use permit and the two side yard dimensional variances for the reasons cited by Mr. Borden.
Thank you, Ms. Pavlakis?
I also vote to approve the special use permit and the two dimensional variances for the reasons previously stated.
Thank you, Mr. Reposeur?
I also vote to approve the dimensional and two side yard setbacks for reasons previously stated.
Thank you. The chairman also votes to approve the 1 foot side yard and 1 foot 7 inch side yard setbacks previously stated by Mr. Borden. I can believe it's minimal relief at best and amounts to more than a mere inconvenience. And I also vote to approve the special use permit as the applicant has given testimony that they meet all the criteria. So, Mr. Hahn, your petition has been approved.
Thank you, do, do you process this through the building inspector?
You want to address that? Yeah, it's usual, it's usually about a three, it takes about three weeks to do the decision letter and get it recorded. And at that, at that point, when it's reported, there's a 20-day appeal period, which you could waive and be at your own risk. There is an appeal period where a party could make a filing or two.
Do you understand that, Ms. Hahn?
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, have a good night.
You too, thanks.
All right, the next item on the agenda is a petition by John Loud of 30 Quill Road, which is tax assessors map 18 lot 29, seeking a special use permit and also a rear yard variance of 11.63 feet. Mr. Loud, are you on? Loud?
I, I'm, I'll be there. Yes, I'm, yes.
There we go, Mr. Loud, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, Mr. Loud, for the record, could you state your full name and address for Barbara, please?
John F. Loud. L U D, at 30 Quill Road.
You swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
All righty, so, Mr. Loud, explain to us what you'd like to do.
Well, I, I had to take the existing rear deck off the house in order to reshingle the side, the back of the house. And now I want to put a deck back onto it, making it a little bit wider.
It looks like he has a, his designer is, is here to.
And who would that be?
That'd be Todd Thomas.
Thomas, are you on?
Getting on right.
Okay. Mr. Thomas, are you there?
I'm you.
We need to unmute you.
There we go, can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can hear you, Mr. Thomas. So, could I have your full name and address for the record, please?
Sure, it's Todd Thomas, and the address is 60 Riverside Ave in Portsmouth.
All right, Mr. Thomas, I swear to tell the truth, correct?
Yes.
So, could you give an explanation as to the, the deck for Mr. Loud's house?
Sure, there was an existing deck that was older. It was removed, as Mr. Loud had said, to reshingle the house. The problem with the lot is that it's an existing nonconforming lot, being a corner lot, And if you go by the designation that the town of Portsmouth assumes for a corner lot, even the existing deck that had been there before, and you can see the concrete, you know, post holes that were, that are still there in the ground. The original deck actually would be non-conforming by the current interpretation for a corner lot. So even putting it back would be problematic. If you can see on the plot plan there, if the property had been a normal property and we had a side setback, the new proposed larger deck would be conforming and would not be an issue. And we don't have any other issues in terms of lot coverage or things like that. This just happens to be because the corner lot, it adversely impacts use of the property there.
All right, now, I know the answer to this question because I drove through the neighborhood last week, but I'll ask it for the record anyway. Most of the houses down there, do they have either front or rear decks on their houses?
Yes, most, most people have, have decks and porches of some sort because the property slopes down towards the water. I think everybody likes, likes the views.
Right, I was sort of surprised when I drove by that there wasn't one on this property at the time. So I don't have any other questions myself. I don't know, Mr. Borden, do you have any?
I have a question. So, you mentioned that it's a non-conforming lot. I mean, the, the front door faces Quail Road, so I would think it would be subject to a rear yard setback of 30 feet. You mentioned 15 feet. So, so I'm confused.
Well, a lot of times the interpretation for the, the street side of the lot would be where the driveway and where the vehicle enters.
No, I would have to disagree. I would say it's the front door. It's the front elevation of the house. The driveway, in my opinion, is irrelevant. But I don't know if that's a question for our solicitor. But even if that were the case, then the existing deck existed prior to zoning and it didn't meet the 30-foot setback?
So the
That was, I believe that development was back in the late, mid to late 60s.
Sixty-five, sixty-six.
Yeah, so that, that was before zoning.
And zoning, I believe, started in 65.
So it probably just missed zoning is my guess.
But the setbacks could have been different, too, in that.
Yeah, that's true as well. So, yeah. Okay. So, I guess my question would be, why does the deck have to be so large? I mean, you had an existing deck that was smaller, that didn't encroach as much. So why does this deck have to be larger?
My understanding is that, you know, and looking at the property, it's, that's the nice kind of sunny side of the house where you like to hang out. And because the lot slopes down towards the neighbor, it makes, makes a nice living area for the owners of the house. That's, you know, the request for a larger deck area. It also gives them some space underneath where he can tuck a lawnmower and things like that, too. So it becomes a, you know, multiple purpose. You know, the request is also to put in a screen room towards the upper part of the plan, towards the center of the lot as part of the deck. So we have a roof, but no, no hard fixed windows or things like that, just a, just a screened enclosure.
It's interesting in looking at the plot plan or survey plan where the house is located on the lot. Whereas had they originally built it and no change, you wouldn't even be here today.
Right.
Yeah, you know. Okay, I'm good. You're good? All right. Mr. Furell, do you have any other questions?
Yes, sir. Mr. Thomas?
Yeah.
How much, either on a percentage basis or by square footage of the deck will be covered?
So if you're, if you're looking at the, the plan, I can tell you exactly where. If you, if you look on the screen here, if you see where the house jogs, all right? You have, you have the words existing deck. So the portion where it says, where you say exist from that, that point towards the center of the drawing is that smaller section. So roughly maybe between one quarter and two-thirds of the deck would have the screen room. The rest of it would be wide open with no roof, no posts or anything like that, just, just, you know, a standard 42-inch safety rail.
Mike, if you can go to drawing 8-005, you can see that better. There you go.
Correct, yep.
There we go. Mr. Furell, does that help?
Yes, sir. Perfect. Thank you very much.
All righty.
The intent here was to, you know, was to keep, you know, again, as much obstruction away from the abutter as possible so that you're keeping it as close to the, to the center of the lot. So that's what stands in bias in this direction.
Mr. Furell, anything else?
No, sir, no other questions.
All right, Ms. Pavlakis?
No, I have no questions.
Mr. Reposa? Mr. Reposa, you're muted.
No questions at this time. Sorry about that.
Thank you. The chairman doesn't have any more questions as well. I do have some questions for Mr. Loud regarding the special use criteria. So, Mr. Loud, if you can bear with me, let's answer the following questions. If this were allowed, would it allow adequate space for fire protection?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
If this were allowed, would it still provide adequate space for fire protection? In other words, would emergency fire vehicles still be able to access adequately to put out a fire or make an emergency run?
Yes, because there's no change regarding that.
But it still provide adequate light and air between buildings? In other words, between your building and your neighbor's building?
Yes, there's adequate distance.
But it alter the character of the neighborhood or adversely affect your neighbor's property?
Uh, no.
Okay. Recreate lot coverage or setbacks less than the average lot coverage and setbacks of adjacent properties?
I'm sorry, the setback, where?
I'll, would you like Mr. Thomas to answer that question?
Yes, please.
Thomas, would, if this allowed, would it create lot coverage and setbacks less than the average lot coverage and setbacks of adjacent properties?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Loud, when, if allowed, would it impose a substantial detriment to the public or to immediate neighbors if this were allowed?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you very much. All righty, I know we have no letters in the file. Mike, do we have any butters or interested parties? We do not. Okay. So John Loud is before the board under, for Tax Assessor's Map 18 Lot 29, for a special use permit because it is a substandard lot of record. Also asking for 11.63 foot rear yard variance for the purpose of constructing a proposed deck, which will have a partially screened-in room on it. Mr. Borden?
Chairman, the request for a deck and a screen porch is a reasonable request. It's accessory use, limited residential dwelling. 11.63 variance request still leaves almost 20 feet to the property. I think it's a reasonable amount to approve with a mere inconvenience. The lot coverage is only 12.8 percent, so it's not an excessive amount of coverage for this property. Decks are prevalent in this neighborhood. So I think that it's a reasonable request, and I vote to approve. In regards to the special use of a lot of record, the lot is almost 20,000 square feet at 19,423. It's almost a moot point. But it meets the criteria for special use, substandard lot of record approval. I vote to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Furell?
Mr. Chairman, I also vote to approve the special use permit and the dimensional variance for the rear, for the rear yard for the reasons cited by Mr. Borden.
Thank you. Ms. Pavlakis?
I concur with my fellow board members, and I vote to approve the special use permit and the dimensional variance.
Thank you. Mr. Reposa?
I also agree with my peers and vote to approve the special use in the dimensional variance as well.
Thank you. The chairman also votes to approve for the, both the special use permit and the dimensional variance request. As I stated earlier, I did ride through the neighborhood last weekend and almost, I would have to say, I don't, I found a house without a deck on the rear of their property or an extremely large front porch in that neighborhood. When you look at the, you look at the plot map, it is a large lot. It happens to be the way the builder back in the 60s placed the house on that lot, which is why the applicant is here today. As Mr. Borden stated, you know, it's a reasonable request. They're well under their lot coverage, so I think the deny amounts to more than a mere inconvenience. So the chairman votes to approve as well. So, Mr. Loud, you have been approved. And Mr. Thomas, thank you for your time and input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right on. The next item on the agenda is a petition by Paula Loscoco, Tax Assessor's Map 16 Lot 9, a special use permit, substandard lot of record. And also, I'm trying to read this. Article 5, rear yard, it looks like they are looking for a rear yard variance?
It'll be a rear yard shed. The zoning ordinance calls for a, excuse me, if we were looking for a front yard shed, the ordinance requires a rear yard shed.
So you're basically looking to propose to put the shed in the front yard and not in the rear of the property?
That's right.
Okay, so let me get this on record. So it looks like I have Paula Loscoco.
Yeah.
You state your full name and address for Barbara, please.
Sure, Paula Loscoco, L O S C O C C O, 53 Baker Road, Portsmouth.
And you swear to tell the truth?
Yep.
And who else will be speaking?
My husband, Andy, Andrew DaSilva, D A S I L V A.
And you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
So you want to put the shed on the front yard of the property. And it's a 12-by-10 shed. There is an old shed now, correct?
Correct.
Eight by five, and you're proposing a 12-by-10 shed. And the reason you wanted to put it to the front yard is, it appears to me, based on the drawing, is that there's only 10 feet between the porch of the house and an arrogant bank.
Yeah, I think it's actually nine feet, but that's, that's, it's not much space.
Are there other sheds in the area similar to that?
Do you want to answer?
Yeah, on, on all the roads in this neighborhood, there's three roads, Baker Road, Hall Road, and Tharian Row. 100% of the houses have their sheds on the street side of the house. Because the, the, we call the front yard the ocean side and the, and the street side the backyard, and that's where all the sheds are.
Which is generally not the case.
Right.
Okay, other than, other than the fact that you want to put it in the front of the house, I mean, everything else conforms. It's a 12-by-10 shed, which is allowed as a matter of right.
Yes.
Mr. Borden, do you have any questions? All righty. Mr. Furell, any questions?
No, sir, no questions.
Ms. Pavlakis?
No, no questions.
Mr. Reposa?
No questions at this time.
And the chairman doesn't have any as well. I do have to go through these special use criteria questions with you. So if allowed, would this still offer adequate space for fire protection?
Yes, it does, it doesn't really make any difference.
All right, would it provide adequate light and air between the buildings?
Yes.
Would it alter the character of the neighborhood or adversely affect neighboring properties?
Not at all.
Would it create lot coverage and setbacks less than the average lot coverage and setbacks of the adjacent properties?
No.
Would it impose a substantial detriment to the public or to immediate neighbors?
No.
Okay. All righty, before I ask for any other interesting parties on it, there are five butter letters in the file, which I will read. Amanda Carr of 42 Baker Road. I am writing regarding a variance for a shed for 53 Baker Road, Andy DaSilva, Paula Loscoco. I share property aligned with 53 Baker Road. I would most directly be affected by any structure on that property as our yards run directly into each other with no line of sight, impediments, trees, fencing, et cetera. I fully support granting a variance for a new shed with the proposed dimensions. Everyone on Baker Road has sheds, much larger sheds, on the street side of Baker Road. The street side is considered the backyard and the water is considered the front yard. Therefore, all the sheds in this neighborhood are in the backyard parentheses, street side. We have a shed on the street side. And the neighbors who share a property are on the other side of 53 Baker Road, far away, and a large 13-by-9 shed. Lots on Baker Road are now along, therefore this is the only place where outbuildings such as garages and sheds. As the proposed shed is on the street side, it would not impede either a buddy neighbor's views. Please, please feel free to contact me if you require any further information sincerely, Amanda Carr. And we have one from Bill Collins. William K. Collins and Darlene Collins of 37 Baker Road in Portsmouth have no objection to and fully support the petition of Paula Loscoco at Al to locate a 10-by-12-foot shed in their rear yard. Thank you. And this is from Beth Herbert Sylvia. Good morning. Please render this email as supportive of variance request from Andy DaSilva and Paula Loscoco of Baker Road for placement of a shed in an area on their property between their house and Baker Road. Those take immaculate care of their property and allowing this variance will afford them to continue to do so. Thank you for your support of this request in advance, Beth Herbert Sylvia George, Sylvia, 41 Baker Road, Portsmouth, Rhode Island. This is from a Deborah Bear of 33 Baker Road. Attention Portsmouth Zoning Board of Review. I am writing to support the application from Andrew DaSilva and Paula Loscoco for variance to replace a shed. It's my understanding that the shed will be placed where the car runs sighted, will be against defense and partially hidden by trees in their garden. Here's a problem lies in the belief that the shed will be placed in their, in quotes, front yard. Many of us that live on the water consider that roadside our backyard. And to put a storage shed on the waterside would definitely create an isolation for neighbors and block applicants' view of the bay. I hope you will fit to grant their request, regards, Deborah Bear. And the last one is from Rusty Steve of 65 Baker Road. Hello, this is to support my neighbors Paula Loscoco and Andy DaSilva's request for variance for their storage shed. The shed has been there forever and there is no way it can be between their house and the water. Moreover, this doesn't make any sense. as nobody sheds between their house and the water. Waterside is considered the front and that is where the deal is. I hope that you will approve their request. All the best, Rusty Stief, 65 Baker Road. Is there any other butters online that want to speak at all?
No answers.
Okay. Even on Paula Loscoco and Andy Dasilva before the board seeking a dimensional variance for rear yard shed placement requirement and construct a 10 by 12 shed and place it in the front yard of their home. They're also seeking a special use permit under Article 6, Section A4 for substandard lot of record, which they have given testimony they meet all of that criteria. So, Mr. Gordon.
Chairman, this is an extremely reasonable request. I'm very familiar with Baker Road. I almost purchased a home on Baker Road and all of the sheds are in the front yard. And it's amazing that for 3,319 square foot lot, lot coverage is in compliance, 0.8%. The request for the variance is more than reasonable in that it amounts to more than a mere inconvenience because property has no garage, it has no storage capabilities, no basement, and it's the least relieved necessary and a reasonable request. Petitioner has met all the special use criteria as well and I vote to approve. Thank you, Mr. Furell.
Mr. Chairman, I, I also vote to approve the special use permit and the rear yard setback request for the reasons cited by Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Bob Lachas.
I concur with both my colleagues and I vote to approve the special use permit and the setback request.
Thank you, Mr. Reposa.
I also approve both the setback and dimensional request.
Thank you. The chairman spent many a day in his childhood over on Theryan Road, so was also very familiar with the area down there. And not only did there used to be sheds in the front yard, but there were outhouses in the front yard at the same time.
Current shed is a former outhouse.
There you go.
And duck house.
So it's very common down there to have the sheds in what everyone there considers the backyard and is the front yard. I think to deny amounts to more than a mere inconvenience. So I certainly vote to approve that and the special use permits. You have been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a petition by Mark and Joanne Album seeking a dimensional variance for rear yard setback and lot coverage constructing 12 by 14 foot storage shed located at 93 Schooner Drive. Are they on? If they are on. So, Mr. and Mrs. Album, could individually each one of you state your full name and address for Bobber for the record?
Sure, my name is Joanne Album. I reside at 93 Schooner Drive in Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Mark Album, also 93 Schooner Drive in Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
You both swear to tell the truth?
You got it, swear.
So tell us what you'd like to do.
So what we'd like to do is place a 12 by 14 shed in the back of our yard to the right, if you're looking at our property from the street.
And that's pretty much it?
Yes, the only thing is that we, instead of doing a 30 foot to our property line, we'd like a 10, please.
Okay, so I have to ask this question.
Sure.
A 10 by 12 shed is allowed as a matter of right three feet from the property line. You wouldn't even be here. So why the 12 by 14 shed? Knowing that neighborhood, which is a fairly new neighborhood, you have a house which has a full basement and you also have a garage. So storage wouldn't always to me seem to be an issue. Why such a large shed?
So it wouldn't be an issue, but we have an in-ground pool, so we have a lot of furniture for the back pool. And we also have a drive and a lawnmower, lawnmower. So that's why such a large shed. Because if we put it all in the garage, we won't be able to fit both our vehicle garage either.
Right, but if you put, again, a 10 by 12 foot shed, again, 120 square feet, you wouldn't even be here. Now, you could actually put it closer to the property line than what you're proposing.
And we understand, Mike, explain that to us. But again, because we have the in-ground pool, we have some lounge chairs back there. We have a table and some chairs for dining back there. And so that's why we needed the extra space for the shed.
What I'm trying to probe at is, you know, our ordinance calls for a hardship that amounts to more than a mere inconvenience. And what I'm trying to find is where this becomes a hardship if it's not allowed. And looking at the shed, I don't know what the height it's due to. Does it say what the height of the walls are on the shed?
Yes, it's a, it's a, the height is what a 10 by 10 would be. That's what they told me, the company.
All right, so generally sheds that I've always dealt with usually come with six foot high walls, okay? However, there are sheds, and I being the owner of one, that you can get what are called full height walls. They're eight feet in height. And by doing so, it allows you to build a loft up inside the roof part of the shed, which allows for an immense amount of storage. So.
Yeah, that's, we, that's not this shed, though. We don't have that kind of headroom shed.
Right, and that's why I'm putting this out there, that there are other sheds out there that you can get that are 10 by 12 that conform to the ordinance. It's just they would be a little bit higher to allow for that overhead storage than having to go through this. But again, it's your petition. Again, I'm just probing for where the hardship comes in. Because we have a lot of stuff, isn't necessarily hardship. But you have to convey that to the board.
Okay, so if we put everything in the garage, like I said, we can't fit both vehicles in the garage. And then we do have a bulkhead that goes into the basement, but I can't take a full-sized table through that bulkhead. It's very difficult for my husband and I to do, even together.
Or the snow blower, or the John Deere, or the push mower.
Yeah, the John Deere tractor is a problem also because it's wide because it has a double bagger on it. So even for us to put it in the middle, in the garage, in the, in the middle of both vehicles, because obviously I can't get it into, through the bulkhead, right? We've scratched our cars, so because it does not enough space in between with the double bagger on the John Deere. So that, so we, I'd like, I'd like the John Deere to go into the shed.
I'm just, I mean, I'm trying to see what on your thing to see what the dimensions of your garage are. I know it's 624 square feet.
Yeah, but it's still a tight, with the, with the John Deere in the middle of both vehicles, it's still tight.
Your garage is 24 by 27, which is a fairly large garage.
But not with a John Deere in between both vehicles. Again, when we open up our, our doors to our vehicles, we hit the John Deere now. So we can hardly get out of our car doors because we can't open up doors completely to get out of the vehicle if the John Deere is in there.
Right.
Have to squeeze out of the doors. Right, because you can't open the doors completely at all. You can't even open them up halfway.
I don't have any other questions. Do you have any questions, Mr.?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Hi, John Gordon, Zoning Board member. I'd like to address the lot coverage.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
Okay.
Okay, so I, I think you need a variance. If I look at the house at 44 and let's say 28 feet, that's 1,232 square feet. If I look at the garage at 24 by 28, that's 672. Fortune 140, I'm coming up with existing coverage excluding the pool, which, Mr. Assistant Planner, pool, I believe, is, is included in lot coverage? Is that correct?
Yeah.
All right, so, so I'm coming up with excluding the pool to 1,044 square feet. How, how large is the pool?
The pool is 16 by 32.
Okay, so that being said, 16 by 32, 408. If I add a pool, bear with me for a moment, plus 2044, I come up with 2524 divided by 3,030. I come up with existing lot coverage of 12.6%. So somehow you miscalculated your lot coverage.
There patio around the pool?
No.
No patio around the pool? So what, what you're saying is you have a 23% coverage proposed, which you're well under the coverage at 12.6%. So I think the lot coverage variance request is a moot point and you're under the ordinance. Is that correct?
Okay. I, I felt that the reason I needed the variance was because there has to be 30 feet from the back of your shed to the property line.
You're not out of the woods yet. There are setback variances.
Okay.
There are lot coverage variances. So what I'm saying is, I don't believe you need a lot coverage variance. I, I concur.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I concur with that. There existing lot coverage, I don't believe is 1,350 square feet.
No, no, not at all. No, I mean, I calculated 12.6%.
Right, right. So I'm, I'm pretty confident for the record that we can state that there is no lot coverage variance in this particular request.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Gordon, you want to continue?
So I, I understand that that you have a two-car garage and you want to garage your vehicles and you have no room for, for a shed. I guess I'm trying to think there are any other options. So right now, I'm, I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Furell, do you have any other questions?
No, sir, I do not have any other questions.
All right, Mr. Bob Lachas.
No, I have no questions.
Okay, Mr. Reposa, do you have any questions? Mr. Reposa?
No questions at this time.
Thank you. Okay, Mike, do you, could you see if there's any butters or anyone on that want to speak to this?
No hands raised.
No hands raised, alrighty. Mark and Joanne Album will be for the board for Tax Accessors Map 23 Lot 97, seeking a 20 foot to rear yard setback and for the purpose of placing a 12 by 14 foot shed.
Mr. Chairman, this is an interesting petition. And quite honestly, I could make an argument either way, to deny or approve. However, based on the testimony from the petitioner, even though they have a 20,000 square foot lot and a two-car garage, I think it's a reasonable request to be able to park your cars in the garage and to have a shed that stores a mower, a lawn furniture. However, the question is, is it the least relieved necessary? A 12 by 14 shed versus a 12 by 10 shed? The additional square footage is, 12 is 120, 48 square feet. So terms of the additional 48 square feet to allow the lawn tractors and furniture, given they have a pool, I think is a reasonable request. I don't think it's excessive. An argument could be made that it's not the least relieved necessary. However, I think it is a hardship amounting to more than a mere inconvenience that they can't store their tractor and lawn furniture, given that they have a pool. Particularly since they have a 20,000 square foot lot and they're only proposing to have an 11.4% lot coverage of the required coverage under the ordinance. So I think for them to fully enjoy the permitted use, I think it does meet the criteria of a hardship amounting to more than a mere inconvenience. And I vote to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Furell.
Mr. Chairman, I also vote to approve. I believe the original ordinance is allowing the smaller lot size may not have been, may not have considered a typical home with the addition of a swimming pool whose furniture and accoutrements do take up volume. So I think the, the larger, the larger shed is necessary to accommodate a reasonable amount of, of equipment necessary for the applicant to enjoy their home. So I vote to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Bob Lachas.
I concur with Mr. Gordon, Mr. Furell, and I vote to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Reposa.
I also agree with Mr. Gordon and Mr. Furell and vote to approve.
Thank you. You know, as with Mr. Gordon, I could go either way on this. At this point in time, my vote would be irrelevant. But one thing that also sticks out to me is the fact of where the house is placed on property. That's because in this particular case, the septic system is in the front of the yard, which pushes the house further back, which pushes anything you do far back on that lot. You have no room in front to do any. So I, I have to concur, Mr. Gordon kind of assuaded me, and I have to concur with Mr. Gordon. I think in this particular case, it does amount to more than a mere inconvenience. So the chairman will vote to approve as well. So you've been approved.
Thank you.
Right, good evening.
Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the board is going to take a five-minute break and we will be back online in five minutes. All right, the zoning board review is now back in session. The next item on the agenda is petition by Christopher and Deborah Burnett seeking a special use permit to construct a small solar energy system for Article 5, Section J.3, located at 115 Seaman Drive. Are the Burnett's on? If so, could you raise your hand, please? I did not see the Burnett's on. Attendees? All right, not seeing them. I would entertain a motion to continue the petition of Christopher and Deborah Burnett to our regularly scheduled meeting of August 20th.
Let's see, do you want to just move forward with the next one?
Okay, and I have to recuse myself from the next one.
Oh, we have an attendee who had the hands up. Oh, we did. The attendee that, oh, here we go.
That's Tia Segwinski. In the bottom.
I have a question because this read, they're requesting permission to construct a solar system. The system, my understanding, has been constructed for many months.
Well, Mr. Segwinski, we'll get into that when we, I can only tell you what they've applied for.
Okay.
Okay, and the board will delve into, you know, if the system already exists, we will find out. But the application is just that. Okay, so, and right now, all right, well, I'm not gonna sit here and wait, so I would entertain a motion to continue the petition.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we continue the petition of Christopher and Deborah Burnett to our next regularly scheduled meeting in August.
Did I have a second by someone?
Mr. Chairman, Ben Furrell seconds the motion.
All right, motion has been made in second to continue the petition of Christopher and Deborah Burnett to our regularly scheduled meeting of August 20th, 2020. Take roll call, or in favor of Mr. Gordon?
Mr. Gordon is in favor.
Mr. Furrell?
Mr. Furrell is in favor.
Pablacus?
Pablacus is in favor.
Reposa?
I am in favor as well.
And the chairman is also voting in favor of Mr. Rashoul, would you make sure we get a line to them saying we did put it off? But they will be first on the agenda next month. Alrighty, now, the next petition of Donovan Gray Distributing seeking a special use permit for agricultural special events to operate a limited series of beer gardens located at 54 Bristol Ferry Road. The chairman has to recuse himself of this petition as my son owns property that abuts this. So therefore, I will turn the chair over to Mr. Gordon, and because this is the last one for the evening, for the record, you will see that the chairman will be leaving the meeting. Mr. Gordon, it's in your hands, and thank you, everyone. I will see you next month.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there a representative from Donovan Gray Distributing LLC?
Yes, I am here, Matthew Gray, 87 Colonel Christopher Green Road in Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Where to tell the truth?
Yes, I am.
Tell us what you'd like to do.
Well, as you know from previous attempts to be in front of the board, we had successfully been granted the right to have a farm brewery on our property. We are still in process and will be coming back in front of the board again with some revised and smaller-scale plans in the next couple of weeks, hopefully. We're just awaiting a design review committee meeting to get the planning board and then, of course, the zoning. At this time, we're actually looking to reduce the size and scale of our proposal and move the brewing operations to a pre-existing building on the property rather than a new construction facility in light of the times. Tonight, we are here as a request of both my business Ragged Island, as it currently exists, at the industrial park at 200 High Point Ave, as well as owning this land and, you know, attempting to put it to the best use possible in the short term. We have had some challenges, as most small businesses have, with COVID-19 and the restrictions placed on in-tap room sampling. That accounted for a very significant amount of our business. And then in addition to that, our distribution business was completely shut down as well for several months. While that has started to pick up again with bars and restaurants around the state having more limited abilities to serve, you know, we are definitely hurting. So we have a small taproom space in our industrial park building. We do not have an outdoor space of any real merit. There's a loading dock in the back of our building at 200 High Point Ave that last, in the past, we had put a couple of picnic tables out near. They do sit directly across from two dumpsters and are surrounded by vehicles at all times from, and some of them are coming and going while people would be back there. In the taproom itself, we're looking at about 900 square feet. In that space, we just simply cannot socially distance properly. And I, along with one of my fellow business owners on the island, TR McGrath of McGrath Clambakes, were discussing whether or not we could potentially set up a beer garden at the 54 Bristol Ferry Road property in a modest attempt to, you know, secure some of the business that our taproom normally would have had and something that will eventually happen out on this property, you know, by next summer at the very latest. So what we're asking today is for the consideration of the zoning board to allow for a special event license for the beer garden to be set up on the property with a small prep tent and some toilets. The toilets would be secured through Holman's and other local business, and McGrath is actually required to buy our beer from a liquor store in which they would be purchasing from Allen's Liquor, which is where they secure all of their liquor for all of their catering. Ragged Island would not be serving the beer in this instance. It would all be under the Class F license of McGrath Clambakes. So today, we're essentially asking for your consideration to allow us to have a few days a week where we can have no more than five hours of service as per McGrath's license out on the property to allow for proper social distancing and help to recoup some of the losses that our business and also McGrath's are experiencing due to the challenges of COVID-19. I am aware that this is a, could be seen as something that sets a precedent. Certainly not what we're, you know, trying to do. We're just simply trying to, you know, help salvage our business this year and, you know, assist a few other businesses as well as we navigate these kind of crazy times.
So the chairman has a question. In regards to your request, my opinion is that based on your original zoning approval, your current request is not going to increase traffic noise, smoke odors, impact the neighborhood. What you're proposing is in compliance with your original zoning special use permit approval.
Correct. It's basically essentially what we're going to be able to do out here minus the large tent and outdoor toilets in the future. What we cannot serve alcohol on the property yet per state law because we're not currently manufacturing it here. And the state allows for us as a brewery to offer samples to our customers as long as we are manufacturing on that site with federal license. We can't receive our federal license until we have a facility that's capable of handling it. We have to put in our we have to put in a septic system and convert one of our buildings with minimal interruption to the current building structure and asking for no additional square footage in the new building, but that'll be at a future hearing. As far as right now goes, yes, it wouldn't change anything from what we've been approved for already, other than that it would be for less hours than the previous.
So my understanding is what you're proposing is a less intense use of what you've already been approved for. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have no questions. Board members, do you have any questions of the petitioner?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Ben Furrell has some questions.
Mr. Furrell, please, go ahead.
Mr. Gray, you'll be, or you're proposing to do this beer garden series of events. Will they be governed by anything that the state does if, for example, restaurants needed to close again or outdoor seating had to be rescinded? Would you also fall under those criteria?
Absolutely. Yeah, we would be required to comply with all state's regulations on a normal basis and certainly any new changes that are implemented through the governor's office for protections for all of our health and safety.
And I assume, my second question is, I assume you do not require a liquor license to do this because it's the clambake organization that's actually doing the serving?
Yeah, I would not be able to do this on my own. We would require a Class F license holder to work with us. And like many catering businesses on this island, they're all affected by, you know, canceled weddings and corporate events, so they would jump at a chance to have some business coming their way.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no other questions.
Any other board members have any questions?
No. Kathy, I don't have, Kathy Pablacus, no questions.
Board members, any other questions? And that being said, are there any others or interested parties that, if we have two ends, three ends up right now? Not sure who this is. This has a 14018 number. Go ahead, you're unmuted. Yes. Hello, would you like to speak for the petition? Hello?
Hello?
Yes?
The Burnett's, I don't believe it's relevant to the current discussion. We've been here the whole time.
Sorry.
Not familiar with Zoom.
The item has been continued to the August agenda.
I'm sorry?
That their item has been.
Oh, that was the all right.
All right, Megan Kessel.
Okay, you want to speak to the Donovan Gray Distributing LLC petition?
I do, yes.
Please. Go ahead. Do you swear to tell the truth?
I do. So the reason I'm asking is because I respectfully disagree with your assessment that this is not at all at odds with the previous zoning. Because going from an in-building brew tasting to having an outdoor beer tent and an outdoor tent for McGrath's, there's, that's very different. And there are a lot of, there's a number of unanswered questions that I would hope that before the zoning board would prove this, that they would take into account. So I say this because my parents live immediately adjacent. They're at 24 Bristol Ferry Road. And their property, their porch is in the direct line of sight for where the, both where the portable toilets and the prep tent would be. This is something where there happens to be a distinct lack of trees, where there are a lot more trees on various other parts of the property. Having, you know, Having, you know, number one, there's an unsightly nature to it. And two, I mean, this is my elder, these are my elderly parents who are next door and suddenly we're putting like toilets and food prep and the, the prep tent right in the line of sight, right where they can see it. But it also means that everybody can see when, when they are, are or not home. So it raises a safety issue for me. But I do have a couple of specific questions. And let me just preface to say I'm excited about this, probably more excited than my parents. But I, I think that there are some reasonable things that I would like to, that I, I hope, Matt, that Mr. Gray, that you would take into consideration. Like, and for, as I said, I'm a big supporter. I have run in races by, sponsored by Gray Market, Manor Marketing. I've actually, my wedding was at the McGrath Clambake Club. I mean, this is, your businesses are ones that I want to see succeed. I just want to see them succeed in a way that is the most neighborly as possible. So a couple of things. One is having McGrath's Clambake Club, it says a prep tent. I don't think I've heard specifically or saw in the application that would they, would McGrath's be selling food? Because that would be, there, there's a, quite frankly, there's just an odor that's going to carry over to, to the porch next door with the, with the porta potties. Could they be moved further north away from, you know, as far away as possible and out of the sightline closer to, like, if they were out of the sightline closer in the line with the, the beer tent? When you, there's different things that have been mentioned about, you know, this would be a beer garden. You know, there hasn't been a discussion about amplified music. And is that something that the zoning board would very specifically say? There's a lot of whole, this is, seems like a Swiss cheese discussion right now, and it's so broad that, you know, would be requested that there's not amplified music allowed. And that there would be a decibel limit set since this is now moved, would be moved to an outdoor operation. And then just a couple of other, other things. I mean, this, as I said, this is very much a difference when you have something going from an indoor, an indoor issue to an outdoor event. I also don't know what the zoning, you know, I appreciate, Mr. Gray, that you would, that of course you would be following the, the state's guidelines for pandemic reopening. But what I haven't heard is would the zoning board also be mandating that, like, what, what's the capacity limit on these tents? I mean, there really is an issue of like this, with this lack of trees. There's a real lack of privacy between, at that exact spot that where you're talking about putting this. And is that, that something that trees could be put in before this, before there's a, a series of tents and outdoor things happening? Because we're going from nothing outside to 15 hours a week in direct sight of the porch.
Thank you, raise some very good questions. I'd like the petitioner to respond.
Well, thank you, Megan, for asking. I did speak with your father yesterday on the property at length about things that we're working on here. Certainly did not discuss with him the beer garden or any oppositions he had to toilets or, or tent sightlines, but I certainly can address those. One of the conversations that we had specifically around his landscaping and, and the landscaping that was approved by the previous use application and certainly would be the exact same landscape design plan in the upcoming special use application for our smaller use. So with that conversation, you know, he and I addressed that we would, I would be happy to work with him to make sure we were buffering his views wherever he felt it was necessary and in compliance with what we had planned to do with our zoning. I have a, an employee on site who is ready, willing and able to work with him on that landscape plan and to start executing it as soon as humanly possible for, for his benefit and for ours. So for those reasons, we definitely would be happy to work with them, your family, on the landscaping plan as we will with all of our neighbors. Secondly, there will be no music amplified. That's not what we're asking here for today. And as far as the seating, there was a seating plan submitted for the tent. It was a maximum of 96 people in the tent. We would have no more than 200 people being served per day, basically through our plan. This would be by a reservation only. We would not allow this just to be open to the public. We suspect, and I hope that people would like to come and do this. And if that's the case, we would be asking them to have made reservations ahead of time. And if there were spaces that were open, we would only be filling them if folks were to go through our online reservation process prior to getting to the property. So we will be in compliance with all the restaurant requirements and that would be handled through McGrath and their professional team. We would be in compliance with, you know, keeping our numbers where they are. And, you know, it would be myself and my staff on site managing parking and managing a number of people who were trying to attend on a daily basis. So for, I'm not sure if I had not answered any of your questions yet, but feel free to, you know, re-ask any of the questions I may not have answered.
Does the butter have any questions on the petition?
I, am I still on, oh, okay, I just went, I wasn't sure if I was still on mute or not. Mr. Gray, I appreciate that. A couple of, I do have a couple of follow-up questions. When I'm looking at the, this, the photo on the screen right now, you said that the beer tent itself, that would have 90, like a max of 96 people. But there are eight or seven little blue squares that say pop-up tents for local, for social distancing. What are those?
So if a customer, so to get to a couple of things. One, yes, food service would be something that McGrath would also like to offer. You know, certainly it's part of what they do as a business. And if we were to, you know, be hosting a wedding or, or doing some other special events, you know, that's why they have their catering licenses in order to, to manage that process as well. What we put the other pop-up tents out there for were in case people didn't want to sit underneath the tent, but they wanted to explore the property a little bit, but remain socially distanced. We could assign them to various pop-up tents that were spread out on the property, giving people the opportunity to maintain their social distance while enjoying a beverage. We would not be serving any food at any of those pop-up tents. It would strictly be food service under the beer garden tent. And the pop-up tents would just be for, you know, socially distancing while enjoying just a beverage. And just so you're aware too, with our license from the state, from the manufacturing license, once we do have that, that allows consumption of our product anywhere on our property. That is through the state's manufacturing license and the federal, the federal TTB license. We, we are not a liquor license holder. We are strictly a manufacturer with the state allowing us to offer samples for sale. Obviously, this is slightly different from that because we would be having a caterer on site who would be serving and they would be the ones responsible for liquor liability. However, we will also be on site managing and keeping an eye on all that as well.
Have you looked at other configurations of where to put the, the prep tent and toilets? Because again, this application does not specifically speak to what food is going to be, what food might be, be made. Again, 15 hours of, I'm just going to use this as an example. If somebody had 15 hours of grilling next door constantly, three days a week, that's pretty different than what's happening right now, and that does impact the neighborhood. So is there a way to move that prep tent and toilets to the opposite side of the beer tent than you have them now?
It is very possible, and we have 37 acres of land. We could put the prep tent, you know, we're just trying to figure out where it would fit conveniently to allow the traffic flow around the property, whether that be human traffic or vehicles. And also to keep the food prep area close in proximity to the beer garden. That you see is my rudimentary attempt at a map done through Google Map and PowerPoint. Certainly not a computer-aided drafted design, but just to really just try to give you an idea, the beer garden tent itself is on one of the flatter areas of the property. The toilets, we were just thinking needed to be fairly close. Certainly the toilets could be in a number of areas. You know, around the older barn, closer to the pond on the west side, closer to the building itself. So that it, it could really even be all the way up against the building. And what we're talking about a toilet here is not just going to be the, you know, typical porta johns. It would be of the, you know, nicer wedding style toilet.
And I appreciate that. And again, and I'm speaking on behalf of my parents, that they've recognized the situation that you're in, and the pandemic has put everybody in. But I would request that the board, that the zoning board not approve this in its current configuration. That, Mr. Gray, if, if you could propose a different spot for the toilets and the prep tent, those two happen, I, there's, I have a photo that I could send from my parents' porch that looks straight at exactly where you have the prep tent. And there's, so that, that is an issue. And I would be, with all due respect, I would be concerned if this, this variance was approved with this site map because that does create a considerable issue. I would also add, and I, my mother's on the phone and she allowed me to say this. My father is dealing with certain cognitive issues. And I would ask that you speak with both of my parents if you're talking about something that's going to be about separating the property because it would be really important for them both to hear it and not just out of, out of respect for your neighbors. The other question I, I did want to ask though was, I don't have the original plans that were, that were approved. You mentioned that you were still planning on going forward with the landscaping that had been approved. My understanding was there was going to be professional landscaping approved. I know that you have, seem to have somebody that you've mentioned that to my father that you could talk to on site. That seems a little bit different. I mean, also the difference between shrubs and trees. There's a height difference in terms of creating that visual barrier. So could you also just give a, a brief overview? What, what is the plan for the landscaping between the two properties to increase privacy and damp down the noise?
Yes, and certainly it doesn't mean any disrespect to your family. Your father did walk onto our property and sought me out for conversation yesterday. So that's why I spoke to him alone. I would be happy to speak with your mother. I've had conversations with both of them over the past few years on several occasions, and they're very kind people. So I would be happy to speak with them. As far as the landscaping plan, you know, that isn't on this particular application because it was already, again, approved.
I realize that, I was just asking if you could give an overview.
Yeah, so the landscape plan was designed by a landscape architect. And the person who works for me would be the person executing that plan. So it wouldn't change the plan in any way. What I've discussed with your family in the past is that we would customize that plan to include shrubs and/or trees of their liking versus just executing the plan as it was approved. We could certainly do that by right and just go ahead and, and execute that plan. But we're trying to be as, you know, considerate of your family and their views and, you know, noise issues as, as humanly possible.
Oh, Mr. Gray, I'm the petitioner of the butter. I have to interject. I want to move this petition forward. In regards to the butter's concerns, Mr. Gray, are you opposed to moving the porta potties to a different location? And as far as the, the grilling tents that McGrath are going to propose, that possibly be, possible to be moved away from the butters?
We can absolutely set the toilets up and the prep tent up in different areas. You know, the beer garden, we wanted to be fairly close to what is the existing parking so that when people arrived, they would know exactly where to go and we would be able to manage that process as easily as possible. As I mentioned, the toilets can be put very much up against the house. There are some line of sight differences that would change for her family as regards to the toilets. But they can also be placed in other locations. You know, unfortunately, the Kissels have a, a large opening on the backside of their property, the west side of their property as well, which looks at almost all of our, our property. So almost anywhere we put it, they would probably see some of it.
Yeah.
And we haven't mentioned all of that. We just, I think the specific concern is, is that I, we've only asked about the, the prep tent and the toilets. We, we understand, I mean, we're neighbors. It's, we're going to see one another.
Yeah, and as far as the prep tent goes too, it is only five hours per day for three days, 15 hours total per week.
Yep.
Not 15 hours per day, so I just wanted to clarify.
No, no, but 15 hours per week is, is, 15 hours a week of outdoor cooking is significantly different than what was originally proposed. And that, so, yes, if, if you would agree, formally agree to move the toilets and the prep tent, that would be very agreeable to my family.
And I'd happy to meet with their parents before we do any setup for it. As it would be somewhere on the property, it has to be somewhere fairly close to where we need it for, you know, convenience sake for McGrath's. But I know T R and, and I could meet with you guys and, and work that out.
Well, we, we need to make a decision in terms of what's going to happen because zoning board needs to approve a definitive plan. So please do that tonight. So, Mr. Gray, if you're, if you're proposing to move the porta potties, then you need to know where they're going to go. And in regard to the prep tent, we need to know, it's your petition, you need to tell us what you want to do. Where would you like to have your prep tent? And then the board will decide accordingly.
Just so you know, to the prep tent is going to be about the same size of the blue little square tents. It's a 10 by 10. It's not a building size 10. Again, I, if you look at the map, it says prep tent in pink. And the size of the prep ten, tent is the size of the words prep tent because that's my rudimentary design. It's only, it would be in that area between the building and the beer garden as well as the toilets would be in the area between the main building and the beer garden. We can put them closer to the building, which would put them closer to a very large beech tree that does block their view a little bit better from their house. And it wouldn't lead to them looking at a prep tent as, as much. So that would be, I don't know how to show you where that is, but it would be basically right off the backside of our main farmhouse building with the greenhouse on it. It would be just off the backside.
Mr. Gray, just respectfully, you, when you first said you could put them anywhere, you could put them near the pond. You could move, you did this out of convenience sake. What I hear you responding to the chair is we can scoot them over a little bit in one direction or the other. That, so I'm not really clear if you're talking about actually moving them or just slightly adjusting them, but generally in the same area. And I, I'm trying to make a conversation, I just don't.
Unfortunately, we don't have time to cope back to the, to town again in, in a month. If another month goes by, you know, we've missed more of the summer, we've missed more of an opportunity. So tonight, because of our plan is proposed this way, I have to continue to pursue it in this way so that the board will be able to vote on it.
Well, then in, then I'm going to respectfully say the plan as proposed presents a significant, a significant problem to your neighbors. And where, where it's unfortunate that that hadn't been thought about, that the, that you've placed things in the exact spot where there's the lack of trees. So, so that's, that is my respectful comment back to the board.
Okay. Thank you for your opinion. The board is going to move forward. The board is going to move forward. I would like to, at this point, ask zoning board members if they have any questions.
There's one more.
I believe there's another butter that we're going to hear from.
It's Nori. Nori, can you identify first and last name and your address, please, for the board?
Sure. This is Norine Cassell. I'm at 24 Bristol Ferry Road. I am the butter. I am Megan's mother, who has done the speaking for me tonight on many things. I, I have one or two questions. The, you know, we can talk about the other stuff. What makes me a little bit nervous is that the trees that, when this was first presented, were, it was going to be, you know, going to have a buffer there, and we don't have it. And now we're pushing to get something done. And this, he has McGrath clam bake. Will there be other food trucks in at another time? Will there be two or three food trucks there? I'd like to know the amount of those, too. Thank you.
At this time, we are not planning to have any other food trucks, partners, simply McGrath clam bakes. They would be the only vendor. They would be our partner in this to try and execute this properly. In the future, I cannot say that there won't be other food trucks that we would welcome onto the property. It is, to my knowledge, based on conversations with Gary Crosby and Mike Ashola, that a food truck is allowed on, you know, private land, you know, if, if the landowner has decided to have them. That is my knowledge of that situation, based on conversations we had years, about a year and a half to two years ago, almost.
So there could be a lot of them.
As of today, this permit application is for McGrath clam bakes only.
Have any other questions or concerns? Petition. Okay, so, that being said, I would ask board members, are there any other butters or interested parties?
I see other entries.
Okay. Board members, do you have any questions?
No, not at this time.
Chairman, I have a few questions. This is Ben Farrell.
Yes, Mr. Farrell, please move forward.
Mr. McGrath, what is your lighting plan for the, for this facility?
The, the beer garden would only be open during daytime hours, daylight hours, so we would, we would not have a excessive lighting plan. There would be the required lights with inside the tent, which are required, I believe, by the building inspector, so that would be the only lighting that would be in addition. And as I mentioned, this would be only during daylight hours.
Yeah.
Well, that's not daylight hours.
Eight o'clock.
Any other questions, board members?
Yes, sir. And, and Mr. McGrath, there, there won't be any music, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Gray, but yes, there will not be any amplified music.
And the, the food serve, the food prep tent and the beer garden tent, and in fact, the other tents also, but, but how about just, just the beer garden tent and the prep tent will have walls? Is that true?
They can have walls, yes, sir. The prep tent would have walls, and it would have walls on the side of Cassell's property as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just to that, to your point about sunrise, sunset, your current petition says basically through the end of September, sunset in September is, by the end of September, it is 6:30 at night. At the beginning of September, it's 7:18. So you're talking about 40 minutes to an hour and a half after sunset to have this open. So you just mentioned that there's not going to be lighting, but you would have people in the dark. I'm not sure if you've looked at the sunset times.
We're aware. We're not planning to have people here after sunset. The petition was just four or five hours total. We didn't want to put into the petition varying hours throughout different times. We wanted to be as simple, as clean as possible, and we are not going to have people here in the dark.
So you would be closing earlier in September than you would in?
That's correct.
Okay. That's not what that says, but, okay.
So, Mr. Gray, I'm going to wrap this up and summarize your request. Is your plan to amend the petition to relocate the porta-potties so they're not as close to the butter?
We are not making any amendments.
All right. So just so I understand, how close are the porta-potties to the butter?
I do not know the distance, but I would gather it's, you know, 120 yards.
All right. So it's 120 yards from the butter?
Are you talking about 120 yards from their house or 120 yards from the, the end of the prep tent to the property line?
He's asking about the toilets.
Okay, is that, is that to the end of the prop, is that to the property line?
I have not measured it specifically. That was my guess and estimate.
So is the estimate of how close the porta-potties are to the buttering property?
It, it seems closer than a football field and a halfway from the property line.
So it's, it's essentially 100 yards away, is that correct?
What I hear is Mr. Gray does not know that. And from our vantage point, it seems closer.
And what I'm saying is it's roughly 100 yards, at least.
So plus or minus, it's 100 yards. It's not 20 feet. It's 100 yards.
I, I would, I find it concerning that we don't know that for sure.
Well, the board is trying to get an estimate of how close the porta-potties are going to be.
And you're asking the person who's petitioning for this. He started off by saying 150 and then said 100 when pressed.
Well, I'll ask you again, in your opinion, what is a rough estimate of the distance porta-potties would be from the buttering property?
To my best guess, it would be at least 100 yards.
100 yards? Okay. That being said, my next question is, in regards to the food prep tent, in terms of grilling, do you think the odors will be noticeable to the buttering properties?
As far as food services outside on a prep tent, there would be some smells, and I guess it would be depending on the direction of the wind that day. But they certainly could be noticeable as any, anybody who's, as she mentioned, grilling outside would be noticeable.
Okay. And how far is the grilling area from the buttering property?
The grilling area specifically is maybe 30, 35 yards away.
35 yards away, okay. Board members, do you have any questions of the butter before we vote? Are there any other butters or interested parties that wish to speak? That being said, petitioner Donovan Gray Distributing is requesting a specially used permit to allow a beer garden and pepper and our clam bakes cooking on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays from July through September, from Friday 3:00 to 8:00 p.m., Saturday 3:00 to 8:00 p.m., Sunday 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. Mr. Farrell?
Mr. Chairman, I vote to approve this petition. Through no fault of their own, the COVID-19 pandemic has resulted in a severe downturn of this business. The requested agricultural event permit is a minimum relief in order in, in, in providing an opportunity for this business to continue to, to sell product and potentially continue to stay in business. The impact on the neighbor, I think, is mitigated by the distance from the, either the toilets or the food prep to that property. And I'm satisfied that the, that the facility, as described, will not have a detrimental impact to the neighborhood due to the relatively low volume or the relatively low, small number of people who will be allowed per day, the fact that there's no music, no lighting, therefore, even if Mr. Gray were to, were to choose to proceed after dark, I think that is unlikely, given things like liability. And so for those reasons, I approve this, I vote to approve this petition.
Thank you. Ms. Pat Lachas?
I completely, 100% agree with Mr. Furio. I think Mr. Gray has made a major investment. These are hard times. I think people have to be a little flexible and kind, and I vote to approve.
You're opposing?
Would have to agree with Ms. Pat Lachas and Mr. Farrell. I'd like to see this succeed. I know it is tough times, but it'd be great to have, you know, different entertainment or in town, or, you know, the beer garden, the brewery eventually, other than, you know, just another neighborhood. So I'm looking forward to a little bit of, looking forward to it. So I approve.
Yes. Bill, what is your vote?
I vote to approve for the reasons stated by Mr. Farrell.
Thank you. The chairman is also going, going to vote to approve. I, I understand the butter's concerns. However, I don't think the butter's concerns amount to the standard for specially used permit approval in terms of a nuisance or a hazard. This is not a manufacturing site that's not going to have, I don't know, chemical residual outflow from the site. I mean, the barbecue, I smell my neighbor's barbecue when they barbecue, and it's going to be 30 yards away, and the porta-potties are over 100 yards away. And in my opinion, it doesn't raise the standard to a nuisance or a hazard. I think the petitioner has met the criterion for a specially used permit approval. The petitioner has already gotten approval on the site for agricultural special events, and the proposed use here is much, much less severe. It's not going to impact traffic. It's compatible with the comprehensive community plan, and particularly in these COVID-19 times, it's a very reasonable request. So the chair votes to approve. Your petition has been approved.
Thank you.
There a motion to resign?
Mr. Chairman?
Sorry, is there a motion to conclude the meeting?
Mr. Chairman, Ben Farrell makes a motion to conclude the meeting.
There is second?
Athleen seconds it.
All is in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Mayor Richards?
Good luck, Mr. Gray.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.